Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, February 6, 2024 at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of Algonquin and Ipanaabe, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship to these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment to responsibility and reconciliation. Item number one, call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. We have resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, February 6, 2024. We approve this through the committee.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Any items of the cувinary interest? None noted from the table. Item number four, petitions and delegations. Introduction of interim integrity commissioner Harold Elston. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, your worship. Good afternoon, members of council. I'm very happy to meet you and for the opportunity to help you out with your need for integrity services. I just have a couple of things I can tell you about myself. I know you've got a full agenda there, so I won't be long. I'm a lawyer based in Collingwood, Ontario, and I've been a municipal lawyer for over 36 years now. And I've been acting as an integrity commissioner for about a dozen years or so. And I really quite enjoy it. I think that particularly when I'm able to give advice to members of council or to help staff sort things out. It's, I think I'm a good resource, a good, you know, sort of assistance for the municipality. In total, over the years, I think I've acted for about 50 municipalities as their integrity commissioner. But now I'm down to just a handful, probably seven or eight. And most of them are in what I think of as northeastern Ontario. So I start down in Nippising and I work my way up through to Miskatting Shores and Black River Matheson, Yurkoi Falls, Cochrane, all the way up to Greenstone. And I, you know, I really love your town and the community in that part of Ontario. And we try and spend some time up there. Over the years, our kids have gone to camp there and you've traveled a lot through your part of the woods there. So I really quite enjoy the issues that you have. I think it helps me when I'm dealing with communities. Most of them aren't as big as Kirkland Lake, but similar kind of resource-based communities, same kind of issues often. So I'm really hopeful I'll be able to help you out. I don't know whether you have any questions for me. I'm gonna say, one of the things I try and do is be responsive so that if you have, see something on an upcoming agenda and you're wondering whether you have a conflict and it's the next day, you know, I have a good grasp of the urgency that you need to come to a conclusion. So I think I really try do things in a pretty efficient, effective way. And the other thing I'll say is I enjoy putting on educational sessions, whether it's annually or semi-annually, and I like to do it in person, so at least three seasons of the year. I like to get out, sit down with council in open or closed, or sometimes a bit of both, you know, just to talk through changes in the law, recent decisions, and just, you know, sort of the basics of conflicts of interest and proper conduct. You've got a great code of conduct, a great protocol. I know the Wisher instruments and work with them in a lot of different places. So you've got a really great foundation in place there. And I'm looking forward to working with you folks and with your staff. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from members of council? Councillor Owen?
Thank you, your worship. Through you, to Mr. Elston. I'm very pleased to hear that you have a connection with northeastern Ontario because I'll let out a little secret. I was actually born and raised in southern Ontario. And people from southern Ontario don't always understand, and there is quite a difference. The education part, I think, is something that our council will definitely, and probably staff, I can't speak to them though, will be interested in. We put a high priority on education in this council and along with our staff. And hopefully, we won't give you too much to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon. And I just, I know every job or position and whatnot, they have their own challenges. So just, what are the challenges of this position for you? So that we can understand that and be able to work with you effectively. I would take it that calling you quarter to 11 at night would be out of the question.
Well, thank you, through you, your worship. Just in terms of the biggest challenge I face, I have to say is when I receive a complaint and I have to do an investigation. And, you know, I find it's the hardest thing. On the one hand, I often have a person who has been, you know, perhaps not treated fairly, properly. But on the other hand, I know I'm dealing with an elected official's reputation. And I can tell you, I lose sleep over those decisions. It's very difficult because I'm the prosecutor, I'm the defense attorney, I'm the judge, I'm the jury, I'm the police officer. And, you know, there's just so many things to take into account. And I'm always anxious that I get it right. So I think generally speaking, I feel pretty comfortable with my track record. But that for me is the biggest challenge, the hardest part of my job, is knowing that somebody, you know, is going to be affected by what I come up with. So, thank you. It's a good question.
Anything further from members of council? Nothing further. I do thank you, sir. We certainly appreciate your level of expertise. I can say that we do honestly have an excellent team, members of council and staff in Kirkland Lake. We do recognize how our challenges can arise throughout the term. So we do look forward to using you briefly and hopefully not often. But thank you for the opportunity for education. We certainly appreciate that. So thank you for appearing this evening, and you have a brilliant evening.
Thank you very much, worship. Good night, folks.
Good night.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dyken, seconded by councillor Owen. We approve the delegation entitled Introduction of Interim Integrity Commissioner Harold G. Elston. He receives information purposes.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number five, Acceptance of Minutes and Recommendations. Item 5.1, Council Minutes.
Moved by councillor Tucker Trellis, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. We have resolved, the council approved the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held Wednesday, January 24, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number 5.2, Committee of Council Minutes.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dyken, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. We have resolved, the council approved the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Committee held September 27, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item 5.3, Local and Regional Board Minutes.
Moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Tucker Trellis. We have resolved, the council received the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held November 29, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number six, Reports of Municipal Officers in Communications. 6.1, Proposed Corporate Strategic Plan. Alan Smith, Chief Administrative Officer, and Steve Leach, Program Project Manager, Capital Park Consulting, Inc. Thank you, gentlemen.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to move to council. Capital Park Consulting was retained at the end of October of last year to develop the corporate strategic plan. The methodology that was used included review of the town's strategic documents and plans, survey of staff and the public, interviews with council, SMT, and key stakeholders were also undertaken. Workshops were held with council and the senior management team. Working with the town's strategic initiatives, workplace performance coordinator. The consultant reviewed draft plans with senior management team, resulting in a proposed corporate strategic plan before council's evening. And I will ask Steve to provide an overview of the proposed corporate strategic plan. Steve, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship, for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation. If you can put it up on the screen, please. And you can go right to the next slide.
Sorry, Steve, I'm having a bit of a problem here.
That's why I'm glad you're doing it, not me.
Let's try this again. There we go. Can you see?
I see the cover slide. You can go to the second slide, please.
Can you see the second slide now?
No, but that's okay because I know what's on it.
Okay.
Tonight, we'd like to talk about the activities that happened since we met in December, tell you some of the steps that we took in the development of the strategic plan, then walk through the strategic plan itself, and then talk about the next steps. So on the next slide, for some reason, it's not coming through. And we met with council, I believe it was on the 17th of December. The next day, we met in person with the senior management team. And out of that, we produced the first draft of version one of the new corporate strategic plan. Since then, throughout the whole project, we have met weekly or more often with the CAO. And we've met from time to time with the senior management team. So we kept revising the plan. The one that's in front of you now is actually version 10, which is fairly typical, because you go through and you refine it and make sometimes some significant changes and other times just tweaks. We also drafted a template for departmental business plans, which is being piloted right now by the Clerk's Office and the Treasurer's Office. Next slide, please. And I can't see if they're moving, but I hope that they are. We wanted to talk about some of the changes that have taken place, so that you're fully aware of them. When we met in December, council came up with a new vision statement. And everyone seems to be very happy with the new statement. There have been no changes made. There was also a new mission statement that was drafted. And as we were meeting with the senior management team, the point was raised that the mission statement is supposed to be your purpose. It should be in the present tense, not the future tense. So we dropped the "to be." And then as we were looking at it again, we realized that if you truly are public service done right, a model of public service done right, inherent is that, that you have an environment to grow. And since shorter is better than longer, that was dropped. And it became a shorter mission statement. Now, as council, it's, you know, it's your prerogative as to what the mission and vision statement should be. So you could certainly go back to the one you had. But as the consultant, we like the shorter one, and the senior management team like the shorter one. The next slide, please. Whenever we have a planning session, when we get into the strategic priorities, there, I was gonna say rarely, but actually they're never in a format that they're gonna be in in the strategic plan. We end up with some words, some concepts, all kinds of different formats. So somehow, we have to turn that into a strategic plan. As we're working through it, we realized that a lot of what we had was a mixture of strategic and operational. But we also realized that there was a lot of very good direction in what we had received. We had some concerns, and this is one of the most common challenges with strategic plans, is that they're overly ambitious and there's too much content, too many things to try to do in too short a time. So what we did is we split the direction that was received into two groups. The first is the strategic actions that we and the senior management team believe can be completed in three years, which would be 2024 to 2026. In other words, the term of this council. And then some operational aims for beyond the next election, which we provide guidance, ongoing guidance to the staff. But also, after the next election and there's a new council, they will see what this council's operational aims were for the longer term. If you don't mind, I'd like to move through the strategic plan. Jen, if you could change the... What's on the screen?
You want to, you want to go into the strategic plan?
Correct.
All right. One moment, please. Are you sharing?
Okay. You'll notice that the front cover has some collage of pictures, all taken from Kirkland Lake and to show the, you know, all the different things that happen in your town. The next page is the message from the mayor, council, and administration. This was one of the changes that was made as we were working our way through. Initially, it was going to be a message from the mayor and council and a separate message from the CAO and staff. As we were working through it, we liked the message that's on this page. We think it's warm, it's engaging, it draws people into the plan, it makes them want to read more. But when you get to page three, what we had initially intended is the message from the CAO. People like the content. They like the information that it conveys. But it's such a different style from the message from the mayor and council, that it comes across as very businesslike and somewhat cold. So in order to keep the content, but also to make it appropriate, it was decided to change it from a message into an executive summary because it does have a lot of very useful information for the readers, primarily for your residents. If you move on to the next page, this is the vision to action, which shows that it's the council who sets the vision and the mission and the four strategic priority areas. Then the action, which would be the responsibility of the administration, the staff, is to develop corporate business plans that are in alignment with the strategic plan and to track and report on progress throughout the year. We have a separate page for each of the strategic priorities. And again, these are strategic priorities that the senior management team believe they can accomplish over the next three years. You'll notice that we made an addition of strategic questions, which was in some of... You would answer all of those questions yes when you're considering a project or an initiative. Since we don't live in a perfect world, there will be some occasions where you can't answer one yes for whatever reasons. But these are still questions that you should be asking yourself and trying to get as many yes answers as you possibly can when you have a new project or initiative coming before council. So, like I said, for each of the four strategic priorities, there is a separate page. Each one comes with their own strategic actions, and each one comes with their own strategic questions. The next part is a little bit different. This was where we took everything that, all the direction that we received from council, and it's been included in here. So some of these things could be accomplished in the first three years, and others will be longer term. But you'll notice, it is quite a long list, quite a comprehensive list. But it's, I think, the senior management team appreciated the clear direction that they are receiving. And it's beneficial that they can think longer term. Even though they're working on year to year, they know what the long-term plan is, the long-term vision, the long-term objectives. And once again, there's one page for each of the four strategic priorities. And the last page explains how the strategic plan will be used. That the corporate business plan and the departmental business plans will all align with the strategic plan. There'd be a corporate business plan that will come to council each year, typically as part of, or attached to the budget. And it will really be an amalgamation of the different departmental business plans. And you can see from the graphic at the bottom, the corporate strategic plan, which is the instrument of council, gives direction into the corporate business plan. But then the information flows both ways between the departments and, you know, the top administration as you're developing both the departmental and the corporate business plans. So that is the current draft that we have, version 10. There's still more work to do. We need to hear from council if you are satisfied with this plan or if you'd like to make some amendments. We're continuing to work with the senior management team on piloting the departmental business plans to make sure that they're gonna work effectively. We're also working on key performance indicators that will be used by both staff and council to evaluate the progress on the plan. There's literally hundreds and hundreds of key performance indicators that you can use. So we're trying to select the ones that are gonna be the most beneficial, the most use. And I'll give you an example. One of the ones that we're looking at for your water services is... It sounds kind of boring, but it's very useful. It's the age of the water pipes that you have and the number of leaks that you have per distance each year. This is useful because you're likely going to be wanting to go to higher levels of government to obtain funding. This particular key performance indicator, there is comparative data from about 20 municipalities across Canada. So you can see, you know, how your water system compares to them. And if, as we anticipate, your water system needs more repairs than most, it strengthens your case for asking for more funding. It also lets you see progress, that if the number of leaks keeps going down as you're working on your system, you know that you're making progress. But there's gonna be quite a bit of work to do to come up with the key performance indicators. But we're working on that now with the CAO and the senior management team. And that was the end of the presentation, but I'd welcome any questions, your worship.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from council? Councillor Owens?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. This is more of a technical thing than content for now. I've got two different versions of the same plan online right now with two different pictures. Which one is the right one?
The one with the professional photography of the council.
Okay. But yeah, I opened the other one today, and it's the old version.
That's correct. So through you, Madam Mayor, to all council, we did make a photography change after the initial agenda was published. So the most recent one is the one that was circulated on Friday.
Okay, so that's the only change. Also, there's nothing different from...
That's great.
Perfect. Thanks.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I, this is maybe nitpicking, but one of the pictures shows two workers standing leaning on a shovel. And it's in the current council's operational aims. And that picture's also used again earlier in the, in the document. It's farther away. It's used in strategic questions under strategic priority infrastructure. Now, one of the problems that we have in Kirkland Lake is that residents are always accusing town employees of standing around leaning on shovels and not doing any work. And so I would strongly recommend that we perhaps change that picture out in both places. I just don't think it's the image we want to project, and I don't think the employees... Now, I don't even know if they're town employees, but I don't think our town employees would really want to be shown leaning on shovels. So it's just a small thing, but I'm picture-oriented.
Councillor Shaba?
Yeah. Through you, Madam Mayor, to the consultant. I just looked at the picture. I was just wondering, wouldn't that be nice to have part of the heritage of this town in the picture, like mining, a mining frame or something like that? Is this something that we thought about? I mean, I would think that something of the town's heritage would be there. Maybe it's something that's not typical in some of the, something that you have here. I see the town, Kirkland Lake, corporate strategic plan, the town hall, the workers working, burning flowers, and the building, fire department, and buildings. I would think that's something that could be done. And my, my other question, if, my other question, Madam Mayor, is that... Is this, one of the slides indicated rightfully so that this is not a static endeavor. It's dynamic and adaptable, code and unquote. So I'm just wondering, because after we went through this exercise, shortly thereafter, we got news about the requirements for water towers and all that stuff. So I'm not too sure. You guys can help me. Is this something that's workable into this? Because, you know, we don't want to leave it out. It's an important issue as we move forward. Since this is very dynamic and adaptable, I think somehow we should have it in there for... If we cannot, at least attempt to do some of that, maybe the next council will do it. So those are my questions.
Sorry, just to answer... Okay. So just to answer, "Tell where mine" is represented on the page Vibrant and Prosperous Community. So definitely, our heritage is part of that. And also, under page 11, Current Council's Operational Aims Under Infrastructure, the water and wastewater systems are also noted. So definitely, it is a living and breathing document, and those items are definitely there. Thank you for those comments. Anything further from members of council? Councillor Owen?
Since we're pushing tourism, I didn't easily recognize a photo of Capital Park in the brochure. And if we're, if we're pushing, you know, trying to maximize our tourism dollars, I think we should show a picture of the lake or the campground or something in this plan. If there is a picture there, it's not easy to identify as being there.
Yeah. So definitely, yeah. Thank you, Councillor Owen. There is a small picture, but you were right. It's not very easily...
Is that under strategic questions?
No, page eight at the corner. It's kind of a tree-looking thing. So yeah, definitely noted. Thank you. It's very, actually refreshing to hear from the table that the photos are actually the biggest issues with this plan. I think that states that staff, consultants, and ourselves did a good job recognizing what's important to this community. And if all we have is photographs to add or take away, I think we have done very well. So thank you for that. To the last panel, Councillor Owen. To the last page, help her on. Anything further? Any additions? Excellent. Thank you so much for your work, sir, and we do appreciate your time. I'll have the reading and the motion. Okay, so there is two amendments to pictures that were brought up. Does anybody want to officially bring forth the amendment so that we can have that actioned? Counselor Owen, we'll move to have the amendments. Do we have a second or?
For clarity, what are the amendments? Just pictures on.
The shovel picture and, yeah, and a better. Seven and 11.
Just those two pictures with people.
Okay, and a better photo of Culver Park.
Okay.
Anything further, Counselor Shaba?
Second, second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, hold on. That's not what I heard.
Oh.
So what I heard was that there was the photo on page seven, which was a photo of Wors, yeah, with fellas. And page 11 works with shovel.
Yeah, it's the same photo.
It's two different photos.
The one on page seven is, has individuals working on a, it was like a mower line or something.
Yeah.
They're actually, they're actually working, like.
Yeah, but the two, the two by the cone.
Yeah, page 11, that, sorry, page.
Two, two by the cone on page seven are just standing leaning on a shovel.
Yeah, it's seven, they're leaning on shovels. That can be changed, right?
I mean, you could just crop that and, and load.
There was actually, page seven is, they're working in.
Yeah, but on the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah, on the bottom.
Oh, that one, okay. Okay, so, okay. I told you.
I thought I was tripping there.
Is it just a mandate on the fly?
Is there any preference?
Is there any preference of photo to replace that or at the discretion of staff?
So I have a motion on the floor, so we'll read the, we'll read the motion with the amendment. Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor La Chaba. Be resolved in report number 2024, CAO 001, entitled Propose Corporate Strategic Plan. Be received. And the council approved and adopted the corporate strategic plan as presented, as amended. And that council direct the CIO, or sorry, direct administration to drop an annual corporate business plan derived from annual departmental business plans moving forward. And find that images on page seven and all will be replaced at administration's discretion.
Counselor Owen?
Seven and 11. Does that, that doesn't include a better representation of Culver Park? I mean, we've got a lake there. We've got bedrock. We've got an island. We got.
So the last page has, has the use on page eight.
What page?
Page eight and the last page.
The last, there's, on the last page, there is a photo.
Cross.
Both cross.
Oh, there I go. I'm getting wrong, sorry. I gotta put on my, so paging.
Page eight.
Pages seven, eight and 11 be replaced at administration's discretion.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. That show, sorry, Counselor Owen.
No, I was gonna say, there's nothing wrong with the one on page. Never mind.
11?
Yeah, no, no, I, I spaced it.
You spaced it? Okay.
No, I'm there.
Okay. All in favor?
Yeah, sure.
Opposed? None noted. I am very unanimous. Thank you, sir, for your time and your expertise. We do look forward to utilizing this plan as we move forward throughout this term of council.
Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Item number 6.2, Operational Key Performance Indicator. Update 2023, Quarter Four, Alan Smith, CAO.
I should be.
And, oh, and Stephanie Dell, Strategic Initiative and Workplace Performance Coordinator.
Good evening through you, Madam Mayor. This is our second report for OKPIs, which are operational key performance indicators. They're indicators collected by administration for performance reporting to council and to the public. In this report, you'll also see something different than quarter three as it does show the variation between quarter three and quarter four for 2023. And it should be noted that the OKPIs may change based on certain factors, including the completion of the new corporate strategic plan, as these have canceled operational aims in it, which will result in the addition or change in OKPIs that are reported on by departments, as well as the shift in priorities and needs of specific departments. And if there's any specific questions related to the report and the statistics itself, they are welcome. Directors for each department are here to answer any specific.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from members of council?
We can ask?
Yeah, ask them. And then Counselor Dykens?
I think this is it. There's, there's just a lot of information through you, Madam Mayor. To yourself, I'm just wondering, like, statistics are good and it's good to know exactly what they're for. So under the fire services, it says like callouts, right, for each month? But is there, do you distinguish between like fire callouts and other callouts? And if it's like a major fire or, you know, like a, I don't think a.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Chief Gray. You can answer on this.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening through you, Madam Mayor. So the fire callouts are the total for full-time staff and the calls for the volunteer service. And then you'll notice that the volunteer service, there is a column to show the numbers of times the volunteers were paged out in the month.
Okay, is there, do you distinguish between, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna show my notes, like a cat in a tree, that you're going to Calabarsque or, or a fire service, like, is there any, do you distinguish between fire calls and other calls that you made?
Sure, you, Madam Mayor. Those are generally not calculated.
Okay.
And that is just 911 service calls. So if somebody calls for a cat in a tree or their smoke alarm beeps, that's a, a public service. So, so it's not calculated into the fire call, column.
Okay, so the callouts, they're all fire calls?
They're 911 callouts.
Which is, so that, that means it's a fire call, 911?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Any further, Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. I just want to follow up with Counselor Dykens' question. So where will the medical calls, where would they be? Do they call the fire department or you guys go for medical?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Medical calls, they still go through the dispatch center for 911 follow-up. So they follow them, they're the same.
Is it part of this number here? It's right here. Okay. What's the percentage of that? Okay, what you told?
I would, through you, Madam Mayor, I'd have to take a look at the actual numbers. Generally, it's about a 60-40 split of medical calls to fire calls.
Anything further from members of council? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, let's just comment. That has nothing to do with the fire department. It's okay for me to go now.
Absolutely.
Okay, I put that fire. I was just looking at the stats for the museum and I noticed that, generally speaking, quarter four is not a good quarter. And I'm hoping with our strat plan going into place and them, and that they will be coming up with a business plan to address how to improve their quarter four stats because they're not, it's, it's not viable the way that it's reading to me. Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. To Counselor, a report regarding museum will be brought forward to this council that will acknowledge some of your concerns.
Thank you.
Counselor Dykens, through Madam Mayor, to seven. That's a lot of work and it's great information. So thank you for that.
Anything further? I'll have the reading of the motion.
Certainly. Moved by Counselor Patrick Crowley, seconded by Counselor La Chaba. Be it resolved that report number 2024, CAO 001, entitled Operational Key Performance Indicators, OKPIs, update 2023, Quarter Four, be received for information.
All in favor? Followed, item very unanimous. Thank you. Item number 6.3, Verbal Update, 2024 Roma Annual Conference Delegations, Alan Smith, CAO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to members of council. Along with Mayor White and Counselor Dykens, I attended the Rural and County Municipal Association Conference in Toronto from January 21st to 23rd. This is a great opportunity to network with our municipal officials, senior staff, and be informed of the developments at the provincial level of government. Prior to the conference, the town submitted four applications to delegate to various ministries. All four of our applications were accepted. I won't go into great detail of the meetings as Mayor White will be touched on shortly. I will say that we met with Minister of Infrastructure regarding our Beijing Water Distribution System and the McTavish and Gull Lake Pumping Station. We also had meetings with the Minister of Northern Development regarding the town's need for a new fire station. And we met with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing regarding meeting the housing needs resulting from future growth and development in Kirkland Lake. We were also part of a joint delegation of the City Municipal Commissioners to associate generally regarding the community safety wellbeing plan. While not delegated, I attended seminars or information sessions. The one that was most interest was the one on the new housing water enabling fund. This is the new funding from the provincial government that assists municipalities with infrastructure needs related to housing development. The total bill funds are over about $200 million. Now, staff are currently researching this fund. And this could be an opportunity for the town to apply for much needed infrastructure assistance. We're currently investing in the possibilities of this. And if you have any questions, Counselor.
Any questions or comments from council? None noted. Thank you, sir. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Certain Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Be it resolved in the verbal report entitled 2024 Roma Annual Conference Delegations, be received for information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item very unanimous. Item number 6.4, 2024 Proposed Budget Guidelines and Schedule, Lloyd Crawford, Treasurer.
Evening, Madam Mayor. Counsel, have a report in front of you with tentative timelines to get us through the budget process. If you'd like to turn, well, start at the bottom of the first page. You can see that we've been working on this now for pretty much two months already. And I've started the process, we're working through, I guess I'll say, both major sections, operation and capital. The timelines in front of you are kind of our best guess. I think we all understand that depending on what we put in front of you and your own particular feelings about what you see and where your direction, what direction you may want to give, we may have to adapt the timeline. But we can quickly go to this page here. The budget will be tabled tentatively at March 19th, at which point everybody will have basically a week to take a good look at it before we start our meetings. March 27th, you'll have the directors, myself and several other people from your, from the staff, presenting their discussion around what their piece of the budget is. April 4th, we'll have the public meeting. Again, we stretched this one out a little bit from last year. This gives the public, both through the, the survey that we're doing, but also gives them a little bit more time between the time that the budget was tabled and the time to hear the discussion presented by staff to, to analyze what they're hearing. And hopefully that means we'll get a little bit more engagement by the public and hear some, some what they feel about this process. April 9th, that's when we start. We go through the date, you know, the, the details of the budget and you guys will have your opportunities to speak to whatever it is that you choose to. We've got another one on the 11th. And that's just to recognize that, you know, depending on how long the deliberations take, we may need some room for, for extra time. And the 23rd is our tentative time to put this forward for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions or surge you might have.
Thank you, sir. Before I open the table, I just want to say we do recognize how much work goes into budgets, not only from your department, but from each department throughout the corporation. Since being elected in 2018, I've been advocating for forward-facing and multi-year budgets. Now, since having the asset management plan put in place, the fleet management documents now, strategic plans and business plans coming forward, I hope to see that come to fruition before my time on council comes to an end. And I know staff are working diligently towards that. So I do appreciate that. Counselor Piling?
Yeah, it's not really a complaint, Lloyd, but will we ever get to the point where the end of December, first month of January, where we have a preliminary budget? We've been pushing for that for the last 10 years. I know it's difficult because we have all the invoicing coming in late and payments coming in late after the, after the year end. But is that just a pipe dream?
I don't think it's a pipe dream. I think there is certainly more, risk is too strong word. There's more effort required because as you pointed out, there's cutoff issues. And most of the directors, myself included, would rather look at the year-to-date, you know, much closer to the year end, what they're seeing in the current year before they start adjusting their budgets significantly. So really, that's the, like I said, we, we started this before, before the end of the year. But essentially, that ends up being most of the slowdown at that point. They want to see the numbers. They want to see what's happening. In this case, it was 2023. The accounting system, I will not lie to you, is a somewhat of a slow and cumbersome thing at times. And at year-end, it's especially that. But the issues associated with getting everything, you know, quarter by quarter, it's relatively easy. There's not an awful lot of stuff happening. But at year-end, we go through a significant amount of work to kind of clean up everything we've seen, to ensure that we've got things in the right periods, the cutoff between 2023 and 2024. And again, I'll just swing back to the primary, primary problem with getting things out before year-end is that we don't have year-end figures for the directors in particular to take a look at when they're preparing their budgets. If we go to, maybe I should say, when we go to a multi-year budget, I would love to see that personally. It's, it's a pretty daunting task. There's an awful lot of things that are kind of standing in our way of that right now. We are, I think, doing a very good job of starting to clean up the, the capital side. It may not feel like that to you guys. But the asset management plan is, is a little bit more robust than you may be feeling about right now. And you've got the two 10-year plans that you've seen. So that's all being incorporated into something that's a little bit more forward-looking. You won't, you won't see it in the budget per se, but it is informing what we're doing right now. The decisions we're trying to put in place and the stuff we're going to put in front of you guys in, you know, in another month or so. So, yeah, ideally, we would love to go there too. It also gives, you know, directors and the rest of the staff, it helps us do a little bit more strategic-type planning thinking around our operations. And, you know, now that we have a new plan and we have some direction from you and from the public and some other stakeholders, you know, that. you know, that, that's exactly what will help with a longer term plan. I have a tool now, the software, budget software that we bought last year is kind of up and running. It's, it's starting to get pretty comfortable with it. The deputy treasurer is starting to move on it as well. So it's very capable of doing that type of work. But again, it's really not the tools that are stopping us, it's more the, the processes that we're used to. And the amount of work, the new process we're going to have to put in place to make sure that a five-year plan isn't just a, you know, throwing something against the wall and in a year or two, it's not worth the paper it was printed on. So anyways, but hopeful. Appreciate that.
Anything further from council? Councillor Owen?
Yeah, this is going to sound just the opposite of what councillor Kylie said, but as I remember, I think the first year I was on council, budget wasn't done until the summer. And so I was going to compliment you for moving ahead so fast in such a short time.
I'll take compliments.
And I'm not lucky to pick a fight with councillor Kylie. But, yeah, we definitely made progress and I'm very pleased to see the progress that we made. And I'm sure councillor Kylie agrees with me on that. I also, one of the boards that I sit on, that we make a financial contribution to, suggested to them that they might try a multi-year budget. Unfortunately, that didn't fly. They weren't too interested. But I'm very pleased to see that we are working towards a multi-year planning because the town doesn't start and stop with the new year. It's a continuing flow. And if we can get our planning is more of a continuing flow, then I believe we can be more efficient and provide better service to the ratepayers. So thanks very much, Lloyd. One, done.
Anything further from members of council? Councillor Shaba?
That's through Madam Mayor. I just want to know because I understand the, the problems in trying to wrap things up, you know, year end and whatnot. But would your vendors be the same every year or do you have, you have different vendors and what percentage would that be? Because, I mean, some organizations, we know our vendors are the same, we know what they are costly, whatever this stuff will do with them. But when you do that, a new set of vendors, then that kind of throw a lot of stuff into that. But we're talking about expense side anyways, also because you've got to pay your bills. So I mean, are those, are the vendors, you know, the same every year or there are numerous new ones that will pop up?
It's, it's much more than expenditures. You're right in the sense that the vast majority of our suppliers are consistent from year to year. You know, if you, I'll, I'll flip to coin and point out like in, in the capital arena that we operate a lot of dollars in, that varies quite a bit, even though you'll often see like the Miller pavings, the E X Ps, the aquas and stuff like that. Each of those projects are unique, they stand on their own and it's not just an invoicing, there's an awful lot of work to make, make sure where we're sitting in the project. Without getting too much into the accounting, there's a lot of work on the revenue side as well. There's balance sheet, there's amortization, there's capital, there's all kinds of reconciliations that happen that affect the operational numbers as well as expenditures and revenues. So it's, it's not a fast process. Certainly, at this point in, in my tenure here, I hoped I would have sped it up a bit more than it's been sped up. But we're getting here, we're working on it. And, and it really isn't just pressuring the suppliers to come up with their invoices in a timely manner. Although that is a problem, we've heard me say it. It's, it's, you know, during the year, it's a problem because they don't feel the pressure, but they have year ends too and often they match up with ours. So they'll be motivated to give us a December invoice as soon as possible. But some of them, surprisingly, I don't think they feel all that much pressure, whether it's their accounting systems or, you know, firing on all cylinders, or whether they're just very comfortable with taking their time putting out invoices. We still have stragglers. You know, we ran, we ran a, a check run last week and about forty percent of the invoices were still twenty twenty three back to October. So, I don't, it doesn't stop the process, but, but, you know, that's, there's much more to it than just some of the stragglers.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Sheriff. Yeah, I was thinking more of in the operational side of things.
Yeah.
I, I do acknowledge the fact that the capital side, you know, depending on the magnitude of the project, which will vary from year to year, but on the operational side, so that we know that all departments, whatnot, they are on, on budget.
Yeah, so, through Madam Mayor, you're a hundred percent right, the capital more or less stands on its own. But there is some interaction between operating capital, you'll see in the budget, you would have seen it for the last couple of years, like transfers between operations and capital to fund capital, internal funding and stuff like that. And, and that requires the capital projects to basically be nailed down, like what states are at, how much money they've spent versus budget and what financing sources, whether or not we've actually accessed all the financing we expected. You know, there, there's a ton of reports, there's a ton of submissions that have to happen before you can say, yes, we're getting that much money for that project. So you're, you're, you're right, it more or less stands on its own, but there is some interaction between the two systems that slows the operating side down somewhat. And just to kind of be clear, you know, the directors are, are responsible for their capital projects as well. So they, you know, they're, they're juggling both sides as well while they're preparing budgets.
Follow up, councillor Shaba?
But this is a very totally depending upon our, upon our orders, trying to carry with it as such. On the revenue side, how would we do with, at first to get all those ironiers, taxes, money in? Is that, is that out of order?
Yeah, at this, yeah, at this point, it is just outside the realm. I do appreciate that is something that we've addressed in the past multiple times. So definitely, that is something that can come up again. As a standalone, yeah. Absolutely. That is a good standalone question, councillor. Anything further?
There will be discussions in the budget process about the taxes and then our collection system.
Thank you, sir. Anything further from members of council about the report that is sitting before us? Nothing further noted. I'll have the rea- a reading of the motion.
Certain Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty four four eight entitled twenty twenty four proposed budget guidelines and schedule be received and that the twenty twenty four budget schedule be approved and find that council director treasurer to prepare and submit an operating capital and rate supported budget for telling them.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous, thank you, sir. Item number seven, considerations of notice of motion, there are none this evening. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws, eight point one, bylaw number twenty four dash oh oh eight.
Moved by councillor La Chava, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that the following bylaw defer the March fifth twenty twenty four regular council meeting to allow for a public meeting to take place on Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty four at four forty P M in accordance with the Town of Kirkland Lake's notice bylaw. Bylaw number twenty four oh oh eight being a bylaw to set the municipal water and wastewater rates for twenty twenty four prior to the end of the budget.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Item number nine, questions from council to staff, there were none submitted prior to council. Item number ten, notice of motion, I do have a staff. Does anybody else have any to give before I proceed? No? Okay. So I have item ten point one, Northern College requests federal government focus motion. Northern College request provincial government focus motion. Item number ten point two, A O R S request municipal equipment operator core support motion. Ten point three, clear view resolution cemetery transfer abandonment and administration management support. Item number ten point four, eventual resolution social and economic prosperity review. Item number ten point five, tweet resolution one-third funding grant programs. In addition to tonight, I will be bringing forth a motion regarding exotic animals, hopefully at the next meeting as well. Anything further? Okay. And as you can tell, they've been noted. Item number eleven, councillors' reports, any updates from members of council? Councillor Owens?
Through Madam Mayor, as council may be aware, I sit on T H U board meeting and finance meeting with mayor. And we passed our budget at the last meeting. It's not as pleasant a news as what D S A P may have been. Unfortunately, two thousand twenty four was a very, very challenging year for the, for the budgets. Costs of everything have gone up and funding from the province has diminished. Mitigation funding through COVID has all been eliminated for two thousand twenty four, so we can't rely on it anymore. The province has limited the increase of funding to T H U or to Public Health in Ontario to one percent, unless you are willing to negotiate or discuss a merger, which T H U is currently in the process with, or to find help in it. But that's a whole different finance story. So this year, our budget is going up five percent. It was slated to go up a lot more, but through different programs, retribution of staff and access to negotiations for the, the merger, we were able to limit it to twenty, uh, five, sort of, five percent, which represents an increase of nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty six for year two thousand twenty four for the Town of Kirkland Lake, a total of four hundred and four thousand dollars, which is roughly twenty five percent of T H U's municipal levy. It, it is bad news in the sense because we will be paying more, but good news, if we go back previous council, we receive a cat, or a refund of the, our portion of reserves for T H U. The province has started to announce that they were going down the direction of mergers and it, T H U at that time felt that our reserves that were accumulated through municipal levy should be in better hands with the, with the municipalities then and a new entity. COVID hit, changed everything. In that letter, we received two hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars back in December two thousand nineteen. In the letter, it was clearly indicated that those were T H U reserve money and it should remain T H U reserve money, but inside of Kirkland Lake or kind of Kirkland Lake Reserve Fund, which Kirkland Lake did. We, we were, we were good, we kept the money there and we are faring better than some of our neighbors around the district. So what I would be proposing on that, when we go through the budget, is that the increase be taken off of that reserve, which is a T H U reserve, but within the budget of Town Kirkland Lake, so that we minimize the impact on ratepayers for Town Kirkland. We can still pay the budget three hundred and eighty five thousand, which would have been the normal levy from last year, and go different reserves, the extra in the, my suggestion when you get there. That's it.
Thank you, councillor. Anything further from members of council?
Councillor Dykens, through Madam Mayor to council. I'm thankful to have had the opportunity to be part of the Town Kirkland Lake delegation to the annual meeting of Oral Ontario Municipal Association in Roma. That was held on January twenty first to twenty third in McConnell. I joined the mayor's C A O and approximately nineteen hundred other Ontarians in attending, representing over four hundred of Ontario's four hundred and forty four municipalities. I was able to take in all the program on the first and last day. At the middle day, as you've already heard from the mayor, last meeting and the C A O tonight was taken up with delegations, we have four in total. The whole thing was a really valuable learning experience and a wonderful opportunity to network. As all of you know, our provincial government is one vast, massive machine. It became very clear very quickly that most rural municipalities share common challenges and all are looking for provincial government financial support. On one, on, on more than one occasion, I heard that municipalities can be creative and innovative when it comes to meeting our challenges. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I trust that good things will come from a few of our meetings with the various ministers to help us meet our challenges and current needs.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council? As stated by C A O Smith and councillor Dykens, we did attend Roma from January twenty first to the twenty fourth. Last meeting, I did give the briefing on the delegation results. I had the opportunity to attend only one learning session due to the timing of our delegation meetings and the fact that I did not attend the last day of the conference, opting instead to leave early to meet some weather that we were expecting. The biggest takeaway from the immigration session I attended was how thankful I am for the multicultural group and their volunteers. Currently, the corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake lacks the capacity to offer services to newcomers. The shortfall is made up by the volunteers of the multicultural group and they do phenomenal work welcoming and connecting with the people coming to our community. So we do greatly appreciate the services they provide. For the last five years, I've stated how vital attending these conferences are to the financial wellbeing of our community. I believe the face-to-face interactions with the ministers are what can set one community apart from the rest when it comes time to review grant applications. I want to thank staff at both the library and the museum for sharing their Kruger Dorf collection items with myself to make one such personal connection with one of the ministers. Your actions speak to the character of Kirkland Lake, how we are always kind and willing to go the extra mile. And I think thank each one of the staff members at those facilities for your efforts. During the zone nine meeting with Roma Board of Directors, Representative and to Municipal Commissioners councillor Mark Wilson, elected officials were given time to bring forth issues affecting their communities. Unsurprisingly, as stated, the issues are much like those in Kirkland Lake. Infrastructure deficit, downloading pressures from the provincial government, lack of housing option, and of course, the opioid crisis. I took the opportunity as Director of Urban North of the T M S C Municipal, Municipal Association to raise the issue from Latchford regarding exotic animal, animals. As per my notice of motion earlier, we were made aware by and have since had follow-up meetings with Bridget Cherry, Senior Advisor from A M O, that they will be drafting a resolution for municipalities across Ontario to support. Moving on from Roma, I do want to acknowledge the passing of longest, of the longest-serving mayor of Timmins, Mr. Victor Power. He served for many decades and I am sure as our neighbor, he and past leaders of our community crossed paths many times. I send condolences to his friends and family as well as to Mayor Michelle Bollow, council and the entire city of Timmins. As per the long list of notices of motions, I want to note that most came from correspondence sent to all of council members as they are received first by the clerk's office. We are waiting for one from A M O as stated, and the other came from a meeting I attended with a group of mayors, college presidents, municipal C A Os and others from the north regarding the changes from I R C C. I will include the details of which in my speaking notes for those who noticed it's a motion next meeting. Lastly, this year, the Office of the Mayor will take special care to acknowledge the commemorative days and months as recognized by the federal and provincial governments. As per the twenty twenty one census, members of our community report to have nearly sixty different and unique ethnic or cultural origins. Kirkland Lake is an amazing example of how people with different backgrounds can come together for the success of a community and I want to celebrate that. Nationally and provincially, February is recognized as Black History Month and I encourage our community members to honor the legacy and excellence of not only historic Canadian icons like Lincoln Alexander, the first person of the civil minority to hold office, of Lieutenant, Lieutenant Governor of Ontario and Viola Desmond, civil rights activist from Nova Scotia, but those who continue to represent the unique culture and lived experience of Black Canadians. Thank you.
I'll have the reading of the motion. Certain Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Item number twelve, additional information, there is none this evening. Then we will now break for a ten-minute recess before moving into closed. Well, now reconvene to move into closed session.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor La Chava. Be it resolved that council during camera for some of section two thirty ninety two of the municipal Act two thousand and one as amended at five fifty eight P M to discuss personal matters of other identifiable individuals, including municipal or local board employees, labor relations or employee negotiations and information provided in confidence. Labor relations or employee negotiations and information supplied in confidence by a third party. For the following reasons, item thirteen point one, chief administrative officer, I make a promise of all life. Item thirteen point two, supplemental public appointments to committees, MAC, E B C and PAC. Item thirteen point three, O N T C non-disclosure agreement.
All in favor, opposed, item carried unanimous. Well, now rise from the beginning camera.
By councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Dolly Dyken. Be resolved with council reconvening open session at six thirty six.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number fourteen, matters from closed session. There are none. Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw, fifteen point one, bylaw number twenty four dash zero zero nine.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Dolly Dyken. Be resolved with the following bylaw in red numbered pass. Signed by the mayor municipal clerk, the C A O of the corporation, be a fix there too. Bylaw number twenty four zero zero nine, be a bylaw concerning the decision of the council. Item meeting held Tuesday, February sixth, twenty twenty four.
All in favor, opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item number sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dyken, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved with this regular meeting of council, be now adjourned at six thirty seven P M.
All in favor, opposed, item carried unanimous, thank you.